Let's call the meeting, the Woodbury Select Board meeting to order on Monday, actually August twenty fifth two thousand twenty five. I had September six on, I got about a month ahead of myself on the agenda.
Do we have to?
I don't know what the repercussions are for that, but here we are, meeting on August twenty fifth two thousand twenty five at six P M. So we've called the meeting to order. I have a few adjustments to the agenda, not sure if you have any, but I'll run through mine. I'd like to talk about, I had a conversation with Rob Gildner, who I think Robin forwarded as the fact that he had called. So I gave him a call, I told him we would talk about it tonight, and I get back to him on the best course of action, if there's a course of action for it.
We know what he did ask you for?
I do, but I'm gonna, let's figure out where we wanna talk about that. And probably let's put that down after we approve job descriptions. For the road commissioner in the Woodbury Select Board. And then, now I'd also like to amend the agenda to discuss the town assistant town clerk's pay raise request. Maybe we could do that if there's no objections when Robin is finished with their town clerk's report. And then the last thing I wanted to do was put the personnel policy on, and maybe we could do that after we talk about Rob Gildner down there in Woodbury Select Board work.
Yeah, I didn't, yeah, I didn't bring any of that stuff with me. I was looking at it today, so I'm not remember.
Any other amendments to the agenda? All right. Hearing none, let's move on to approving the minutes from August eleventh and August eighteenth.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve both of these minutes.
As written.
As written, I hope you both look at it, right?
Did.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the August eleventh and August eighteenth meeting minutes, please say aye.
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 They are approved. Public comment?
Nope.
No other public is present, it's not on the agenda, so we're gonna move right on to Robin's town.
Wait a minute, you didn't sign them yet.
Oh, sorry.
I'm ahead of ourselves.
Yeah, I don't want you to.
I can do two things at once. I can listen to Robin, start her report, and sign them.
Okay, we held, we, as in the B C A, the board of civil authority held the biannual checklist review on August thirteenth, and we came up with forty seven voters that needed to be challenged, and which two of those have already come back with no forwarding information for them. And then we also identified three voters that had passed away that had not come off the list, and then two others that had duplicate entries.
They had what?
Duplicate entries.
Duplicate, yeah.
Yep. And the Secretary of State told me how to go about fixing the ones that were the duplicate entry, so they only have one entry apiece now. And the three that have passed away, I wanted to purge them also. And our big copier is out of toner at the present time. I called this morning and they're supposed to be overnighting it for tomorrow. So if you have any big quantities that you want to photocopy in the next couple of days, we're gonna have to hold off. Okay? And you're gonna talk about the Rob Gildner. We also received fifteen hundred dollars from CAT, which is the Caledonia All Terrain Travelers, for help with the rail trail.
So I was thinking about that, can I, can I, can I jump in on that? It's gonna be difficult to sort of co-mingle that with the FEMA, so why don't we just use that money for guardrails instead? Well, we're, you, you guys are both on the rail trail committee, what do you think about that?
Um.
And Skip, where is he?
Was there, did they give it to us with any specific like contingencies of what it was for, or is it just to help? Cause if there's, I think that's a great idea.
Did you hear what I said, Skip?
No.
The fifteen hundred dollars from the Caledonia All Terrain Travelers towards fixing the rail trail? I thought maybe instead of trying to co-mingle it with the FEMA money, that they use it for something else, like some guardrails that are needed.
On the rail trail?
Yeah. Or with?
If it's for the rail trail, sure.
No, but I mean, do you wanna put it in with FEMA, or just keep it separate?
I would rather not, I'd just rather that account be the eight hundred and fifty one thousand that FEMA gave us, or that'll be left over. Yeah, that's left over. And don't put any additions to that account unless it is from FEMA.
Okay. Put that somewhere else then?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
And the guardrail suggestions, would that be a guardrail for the rail trail?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there are some places that, especially the big one from two years ago that was gonna need some guardrails, right, El, Elphie?
On the, on the rail trail?
Yeah.
There was a spot where the bank gave way. But we talked about maybe some guardrails.
Well, if you didn't hear what I was just saying, that we could take that fifteen hundred dollars from the Caledonia All Terrain people, instead of trying to make, mix it in with the FEMA money to have them, to use, have them use that for something else. Although we would probably have to do it since the money is already here. So I thought maybe, cause we did talk about guardrails on that big blowout.
I think as long as they get to use for the rail trail, whether it's guardrails or whether it's something else.
Yeah.
I think as long as we're able to keep track of that, right?
Well, I think I would ask them, I mean, it's their, it's their money.
Was there any stipulation on that?
The only stipulation was that help.
Not when he came in.
Yeah.
But I can pull up the minutes from the last rail trail meeting, where he told us that they were going to donate the money. You remember that?
I do, yeah.
I'll pull up those minutes and see what it says in there.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Robin.
And then, oh, Chris, you wouldn't mind signing this, this is for the completion of the checklist review.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. And that's all I got, cause the other stuff you mentioned that you're gonna go over.
All right, so there, at the last meeting, there was a request by the assistant town clerk for a raise, you'll have to help me out with the language on this, but a raise from, I think it's nineteen dollars and ten cents to twenty dollars an hour. Maybe it's eighteen ninety to twenty, whatever the case is, but up to twenty dollars an hour, as well as this is the part, benefits.
Pro rated.
The holiday?
Pro rated, right, yeah.
Sick time?
Yeah.
Personal time?
Yeah.
All three?
So he didn't finish his?
It's not a motion, it was, it was just introduct, typically the chair doesn't have a motion, but
Right, okay, so don't write it down yet.
So there is a motion, then we can have a discussion.
You can make a motion, you can make a motion.
Yeah.
Okay. I did finally, after some of these discussions, get out the personnel policy and realized that it says right in there that the assistant town clerk and assistant treasurer can get prorated benefits at the, you know, at the request of the town clerk or the town treasurer, but with select board approval. So I didn't know that at the time, I had to look it up.
I'll make a motion to give the assistant town clerk a raise to bring her pay rate up to twenty dollars an hour with prorated benefits based on the hours that she works of sick time, personal time, and vacation time.
Is there any discussion?
I just wonder whether the assistant treasurer might like something like that, too.
Tom Beers?
Yeah, I mean, it was a time when he got some, some partial benefits, but then it got cut off for some reason.
I think on average, Tom is working very minimally.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
But he works at home, too, so hopefully he puts in for that.
Uh huh, yep, yep.
Well, let's focus on this request tomorrow.
That's all in my discussions.
So is that sick, personal, holiday, and vacation?
Sick, personal, vacation, I forgot to say holiday, but I am putting, I'm saying it now, holiday also.
And her, her position is eighteen hours, right? So whatever is in the policy, policy now would apply to her, because all that is based on.
So she'll get the same that I get.
Okay.
Even though I'm doing more than eighteen hours.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. And has that enough information for you, though?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, if there's nothing else, let's move on to the town treasurer's report. Thank you for all the documents he sent along.
I know, it was a hefty one this, this, this time, wasn't it?
It was a hefty one, appreciate it.
Yeah, those were really helpful, though.
Wow, that two pages, is that what you're talking about?
Oh, that's a lot of pages.
There were a lot more, there's a couple things to be talking about here.
I only got a ten pages here.
You got a lot of catch up to do, Diana.
Geez, I'm proud.
That's a little more.
Huh, well, that's strange. Okay.
Thanks, Lily.
Oh, oh, that's bad.
So Diana, if you read through my two pages, everything that's attached to it is just supporting documents to the two pages, yeah.
Okay. Good.
Um, okay, great. So first and foremost, we got our tax bills out on eight fourteen, with a lot of help from Brandy, so very thankful to her, and we've also started getting funds in from those tax bills, so thank you to everyone in the town who's been paying the tax bills on time, much appreciated. Also, this wasn't included, but I wanted to mention it as well, we have had some calls about the increase in the tax rate. Everybody that I've talked to, and I believe that Robin has talked to as well, has been very understanding with the increase of tax, of the taxes. But it has been a topic of discussion. So moving on, last week, or last meeting, I spoke to you about the line of credit, the tax anticipation note that we were going to be taking out from Union Bank. Finally got a proposal back from them, we're looking at three hundred thousand, or three hundred and eighteen thousand as a line of credit. One year term with a fixed interest rate of five point seven five percent, and we have the option to renew for an additional year at the bank's prevailing rate. I do recommend that we do this, this would be to replace our five hundred thousand dollar emergency line of credit. The tax anticipation note is not the same thing as the emergency line of credit, it is based off of our anticipated revenues for the year. So if something crazy did happen, and we needed more money, or more flooding, what have you, we would be able to take out an additional line of credit for more funds if we needed it.
Didn't the emergency line of credit expire?
Yes, it did.
Oh, okay.
And this would essentially be taking its debt.
Replacing it.
Yep. So as long as the board is good with moving forward with this, I do recommend that we have this line of credit. I'll send you e-signature documents to sign for the bank, that the bank will prepare.
I think we probably, if you form a motion to accept this, and then, then you'll send this by email later.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
But for the record, I think we probably do.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve going out for the tax anticipation note.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Lily.
Of course. Um, moving on, we also last meeting discussed the premium health insurance reimbursement. So a quick summarization, the current personnel policy does not address premium health insurance reimbursement. The most recent personnel policy before the one that we've approved now says that each employee may be reimbursed for the actual cost of the monthly premium. When this employee was hired on, we were reimbursing for the premium, their full family premium. So this has increased from two hundred and fourteen dollars a month to six hundred and eighteen dollars a month, effective July first. And we had some discussion about whether or not we should be reimbursing the full cost, or just the portion for the one employee. If we did decide to do that, the reimbursement would be a hundred and fifty seven dollars a month if we were just focusing on the one individual and not the whole family. And for reference, if we, if the employee did switch from being covered under his spouse's employee, or his spouse's health insurance, we would, it would cost the town upwards of two thousand eight hundred and seventy three dollars a month.
Yeah, I was surprised to see after all the work we did on that personnel policy, that that never came up. We were so busy putting in things that V L C T said we had to put in, like military leave and things that were just details. We didn't even think of that one, so.
Yeah.
But the, the way this is worded, this is kinda scary. I mean, each employee may be reimbursed for the actual cost of the monthly premium, that would mean, you know, that these guys wouldn't have to pay their fifteen percent or whatever, but I'm sure that's not expected to be. But that's basically what it says.
You can amend it.
We could amend it.
Right, I mean, if it's, it's not, it's not worded correctly, you can amend it.
Oh, but, but this part, this kind of is. Right, but this is, this part is pretty much defunct anyways, it's in the section that only applies to the town elected officials and so, but yeah, the, the one for the road crew could be amended.
Certainly, we can certainly discuss that at a later date, if we wanted to put a cap on it, or, you know, what have you. But I think currently, we do need to make a decision on whether we're going to increase and stay consistent with the previous personnel policy of reimbursing at full, or changing.
Now that I have a little bit of better understanding of it, I would say that in support of increasing it and paying it in full, as we have been.
Okay.
Especially since we don't have clear policy around it, probably should just do what we've done.
And you said you found where the select board had approved doing it that way in the past?
Yes, yes. It was for, the decision was made back in two thousand twenty one, and I believe the discussion was around a different employee. But if you'd like, I can re-dig out those minutes for you.
That's okay, as long as you found it, it's good work.
Took some time, it was fun, it was kind of like a treasure hunt.
A reading old minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm in agreement with you, Chris.
So that's gonna bump our budget up by about, I think I figured about five thousand dollars.
But.
It's not budgeted for, but.
Gonna consider if they decided to get.
But that's not really an alternative.
Yeah, it could be, if they, yeah.
Well, so if, if everything changes and, and yeah, but that's not really an alternative to what we're talking about.
A lot, what's not, what's not.
Well, I was saying, like, if we, you know, yes, this is an increase in how much we're gonna pay, so we're increasing it to six eighteen a month, if we do that.
Yeah. Yeah.
But we could be paying two thousand eight hundred seventy three dollars a month if the whole family went on the town plan, so.
Well, we could get two new employees that have families, too, but that's really not what we're talking about, so.
I think it's relevant. Yeah.
Well, okay, it could be worse.
Right, that's pretty much what I'm saying, yeah.
So is the board, do you have any other discussion?
We're gonna have to go back and pay the July also, right?
Yes.
I'm in support of that. I moved that we, I'll, I'll do it, move things on, I moved that we, uh, continue, thanks, thanks, Elphie.
Sorry, I thought. I was kinda giving her there.
Continue to do what we've always done, and we'll have to change the, the language on this, but pay premium health insurance reimbursement, so that the entire family is covered at six eighteen a month.
Yeah, well, not the one a month.
It did, I think everybody's did, across the state. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes.
All right, moving on, we will be needing to get our fuel R F P out. I'm hoping to get it out tomorrow, so we will be going for bid for five thousand gallons of propane and two hundred gallons of heating oil. This is based off of our established usage. Like I said, planning to have bids go out on eight twenty six, they will be due by noon on nine, or September eighth, so that we can decide, make a decision on our select board meeting that night.
It's not, did, did we always do that for, for the LP? Or just for the heating oil? I mean, now we have a lot more LP because we've converted here. But I kinda thought that because they, the company that owns the tank, cause they kinda have an advantage because they don't have to come and replace a tank, if somebody else wants to bid, then they have to replace all the tanks. So it's probably not gonna be for, for anybody else.
It is important that we do still have some credits with Phillipsies, who currently supplies our propane. If we did decide to leave them, those credits would come back to us, and we could use that money to, you know, pay for any costs associated with the change of tanks.
I just thought that we didn't, didn't do the bidding on the propane because of that, but situation with the tanks, but maybe we did, huh? Won't hurt.
Your, um, guesstimate of the five thousand for propane, is that just for last year's guesstimate, or did you go back a few years?
That was just based on last year's estimate.
Did that include a full year for this building? Okay, good.
Yeah.
Cause I think it, I think the new system came on around the beginning of the heating season, didn't it?
Yes.
We had, last year we had fifty two thousand, and the estimate came in a little bit under five thousand. Or the usage this year came a little bit under five thousand.
Anybody heard what the winter's supposed to be like this year?
It's hard to know.
We're gonna find out.
Hearing loss, though.
Did you hear anything like it could start in October?
I did not hear that.
I've heard that.
That'd be amazing.
Anything's possible, it's really.
Oh, yeah, I, I've had snow for my birthday before.
Yeah.
I've had snow for my anniversary before.
Which you know, probably take that back, you don't chase us. Is your anniversary Thursday?
Thursday? We had snow our wedding night.
Holy smokes.
So, do we, as a select board, just need to approve this, or do you just send it out?
I, I'm not quite sure, is it something that would lead you to the town?
You just send them out, and then the bids, that's what you approve.
Well, when they come in.
Okay, sounds great.
Thank you for taking care of that.
And then the last thing to discuss is our C V R P C mutual aid agreement. So the regional planning commission, well, actually, the town administrator in Callis reached out to me asking if we were going to be signing this mutual aid agreement. We hadn't heard about it at the office, so I reached out to the regional planning commission. And essentially, what this is, is it's a renewed annually agreement that allows member towns to request and provide emergency public work support. So this is personnel, equipment, and materials during natural or man-made disasters. All participation is voluntary and not dependent on a federal disaster declaration. And this agreement expands existing local arrangements to the regional level, increasing access to support during large-scale events, so.
Is there something new?
Well, I spoke with Elphie on it, it seems like this is something that's been done a lot.
It's been happening for a while, it's just they're making it more official.
Informal, oh, yeah.
Did you also check with Michael to see if he got anything on this, since he is our regional?
I did, and he didn't, he didn't say that he had.
Okay.
One thing that I did wanna point out, like I wrote it in down here, so one of the benefits, and I don't know if this is how it's happened previously when we've helped other towns, but having signed this agreement, it allows us to submit the costs of working with other towns to FEMA for reimbursement. So I don't know if that was a part of what we could do in the past, are you familiar, Elphie?
Uh, never got involved with FEMA.
Okay.
It was more like if somebody's truck was broke down in winter, you had one driver, somebody's grader blew up, we share the grading. It was kind of that, it was very loose, kind of a handshake type thing.
So that would be, so even if the FEMA disaster was not in Woodbury, you could supply something to their, yeah.
Yeah.
Skip, you wanna weigh in?
Yeah.
Then the town that you're supporting would submit your material, labor, and equipment costs to FEMA.
Like if it was a contractor.
Right.
And then you would get reimbursed that way.
Yep.
I mean, it seems like a no-brainer to sign this. Just helps us all out.
Yeah, I think it's a good, for sure, yeah.
Uh, I didn't see a place for a signature. Or just an approval, is that all we did?
Well, what we would have to do is we would have to appoint a primary and backup requesting official and aiding official. They can be the same person, but just one person to handle. Oh, good, where's, where are my words today? One person to handle the correspondence between towns. And then we would also need to maintain an annual list of available resources. So once we have appointed a requesting official and aiding official, we'll, we can sign the agreement and move forward.
Okay. Can you, two, the names of the two officials, a requesting official and a
Aiding official.
And an aiding official.
Which can be the same person.
Yeah.
Just, you know, either they're requesting aid or handling another town coming in.
Would it, uh, we would need to ask him, but would it make sense that John Gordon is our emergency management, I don't know his exact position, his title, but, um.
I would say that would make sense to ask him if he would be willing to take this on as well, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I'm sorry, requesting official and aiding official, thank you.
Aiding official.
Think I could remember that. All right, official.
I also think, I mean, maybe even Michael Gray, if he's open to it, as the highway administrator, or road.
Yeah, I think most of them, yeah. Michael probably has more familiarity with the road than John does, but.
Well, I'm, I'm just suggesting.
If there was a, an event, it would be whomever is gonna ask a small player to come with a grader, or Callis to come with a truck, or.
So you should be one of those, I mean, the road commissioner should be.
Well, I think the road commissioner, whoever that may be, should be part of it, for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
You wanna be the aiding, or the requi, you can be the aiding.
It seems like it makes sense to have the same person for both.
Yeah.
Really, you know?
Yeah.
So I guess it sounds like we should maybe check with Michael Gray first. I'm happy to email him, and see if he'd do it, and then if he says no way, maybe we could ask John Gordon.
Or Elphie.
Thank you.
Of course. Only other thing that I'd like to mention, we did get our larger bills for TH twenty three and TH twenty four in this month, and they're being, the check has been processed that you guys will sign off on. Pretty hefty bill, it's over three hundred K for both of those. But just updating you on the FEMA mitigation funds, it should all be now mitigation, now that we've paid out for TH twenty three and TH twenty four.
So, okay. And they were, the bills were for exactly what the bid amount's worth for?
I believe so. I did not calculate that, yes.
I can ask, I can ask, that's fine, we, we can ask during meeting room, so. With that, the over million that we have left, no, that's what we got, right?
Yeah.
What we got, yeah.
Or probably.
Six or seven hundred grand.
Over five that we should have left.
We should about, about five hundred grand is what we're gonna be having.
We can talk about it during the during skips.
Five thirty five.
Five thirty five.
There it is. And then Elphie had mentioned to me today that he'll be talking about the truck hole that we have been talking about buying will be higher than expected, but I'll let him discuss that during his portion, so.
All right.
And I think that's everything for me.
Great. Well, um, we're still kinda talking about it, maybe, I don't know if you have to, Robin and Lily have anything to add or wanna begin the discussion about, um, we met with, um, August twentieth with Callas. Callas Select Board Chair, Jordan, I can't remember Jordan's last name, but um. Jordan Keys, and with um, Kari Bradley, who's their town manager, town administrator. And it was mostly about trying, uh, to figure out resources that um we might share, um, down the line. And um, seems like they have kind of a, a, a good vision and things like, that are simple. Um, the simple things are like a town health officer, they've got a town health officer. Um, they do not have a, a. Animal control officer, so possibly they would be interested in hiring an animal control officer that also works for Woodbury. Um, but in those kinds of situations, maybe sharing some of those resources. On a bigger scale, talked a little bit about, um, maybe the potential of using, um, uh, all of our, uh, buying power to have a, uh, maybe receive some benefit when uh gravel bids go out or sand bids, maybe not gravel, but sand goes out to bid, um, stuff like that. Um, fuel.
Yeah.
Uh, all those types of things, but it's kinda, I think, gonna be an ongoing conversation. They had a conversation with, uh, um, Worcester as well, and I imagine that some of those things were relatively the same. But, sounds like a good possibility. They're anticipating that we're gonna see a change in the amount of federal funding that, um, the states and towns receive, so. Planning for maybe some contingency planning.
And I did get in contract, contact with my contact at State Purchasing. And towns, cities are allowed to use purchasing contracts, which will be like for the dump trucks. We can use their contracts, and we can also use their contracts for tires and tire chains, if need be.
So how does that work? How, how would that work? We would, like, they have a, there's been a, they went out to bid and they, so that we could get chains and tires at the cost that the state receives them?
Yes.
Yeah, they, you have to be on their list of, uh, purchasers.
Yeah.
And then they put it out to bid, obviously they're buying more product, so they hit a cheaper rate. So we would, the small towns would advantage from that, for sure.
Yeah, and is it usually an advantage?
Uh, yeah, as, as long as, you, you just gotta be more proactive, you gotta order it at a certain time. You don't have to buy a bunch of it at, at once. So there's, there's pros and cons to it, but I think there are savings.
It's not like if we break, break chains and we need to replace chains, that we can just go out and purchase them, we have to have?
No, I, I mean, right, through, through that program, you're not gonna be able to buy them just any old time.
Yeah.
You're gonna buy them in the fall or a certain time when the bid is.
Yeah.
Is fresh.
Okay.
So you, that's, that's where the planning comes in, you have to plan ahead, you have to figure out how many chains you're gonna need for the year, and you buy them that way. So, it, there's pros and cons, I mean, it's, as, as anything, but, uh, definitely some savings there to, that we could take advantage of, I think.
So I'll get back in contact with them and, and have them send me the copies of the contracts.
Yeah.
And then maybe find out, there's, it sounds like we, we need to kinda be aware of their schedule, and be on their list of, cause we're probably not on their list of approved purchasers.
Downfall is that you have to go with their winning bidder.
Sure.
So if there's ten, ten different vendors that are gonna supply the same product, whoever wins that bid is who you have to buy from. So your, some of your choices are minimized.
You're locked in, eh, at that?
Well, if you want the savings.
If you want the saves, right, you could go out.
You can go out and buy outside of that.
Yeah, okay.
Program to buy your own.
Hate those chains.
Yeah.
Go somewhere else.
And sometimes they have more than one vendor on a contract.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So, yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to look at that and see if it's, you know, if there are places where it's safe.
Okay.
Especially like fuel, fuel's a little bit tricky because different parts of the state, you've got different suppliers, right? So, that would be a little bit of a challenge, and then if you have a, if you have a good relationship with your fuel supplier. Kinda wanna stay there, just because the other fuel company is cheaper, for the rest of the state doesn't mean it's the best situation for us.
That, that came up too, is, is how do we purchase diesel? Do we, that does not.
That goes out to bid.
It does go out to bid.
We buy it from, from Gilipsis.
I don't think it goes out to.
I don't think diesel does.
Because I don't think the vendors are willing to set a price.
It's gone out to bid, every year that I've been here. Yeah.
I'm gonna check the files.
We should probably think about doing it.
Yeah, no, I'm quite certain it goes out to bid because, you know, there, I remember Greg talking about, uh, part of the deal is that they have to come once a week and keep our tank full. So that was part, I'm pretty sure.
So anyways, there was talk about like maybe, you know, being able to buy diesel as three towns versus just Woodbury. There's also an interest maybe in sharing some. They quite understand it, maybe you two understood a little bit better than me, their garage is, and you know, this is the far end of all of their, uh, their, um.
Town.
Town, and so, I think there's maybe, um, maybe a hope that there could be some, uh, shared resources closer to the middle of town, I, I didn't quite understand that, but.
I think they're looking for more, um, they don't have a lot of space to stockpile, yeah. Um, and so they.
Can't help them there.
Well, we're, we're also on the wrong end of town, too.
Right, yeah.
But they had talked about, um, I think they had tossed around the idea of purchasing more land to have an area to stockpile, and I think that was a part of the discussion of if we went in on a, out of east or what have you.
So they would have a stockpile that was not related, not close to their garage?
Well, they would have two, two sites, yeah, it'd be more efficient, anyways.
I, um, found some statutes that kind of gave potentially some guidance to towns, um, collaborating like this together, I sent it over to Kari as well, so.
Um, do you mind following up and see if they, you know, I think as long as the select board is interested um, keeping the conversation going, we don't, we haven't made any promises yet, but I think it's worthwhile.
I think maybe next step, if they have already talked to Worcester, then getting all three of us.
Three towns.
Together and then coming up with a list of what we all need.
And Kari was gonna, um, uh, I think, talk to Vermont, like cities and towns to see if they might organize some sort of buying, um, group for sand or fuel or whatever it might be, that we felt like we paid dues to them, so. It's surprising that it doesn't happen already. Anything I'm, you know, I didn't know there's a ton we're missing, we met for like an hour and a half, but, um, that's the, that's the general gist, right?
Yeah, I think we talked about some equipment sharing, um, something, something along those lines as well, but I think that's.
I know, one year. Hardwick wanted to borrow our, our lawn clipper thing with the brush hog.
Yeah.
Did ever, did that ever happen?
No, no, not to my knowledge, no, but like that for like roadside mowing.
Yeah.
You know, uh, I know Callas has a really nice roadside tractor with a roadside mower on it, you know, something that.
But they also said it wouldn't be only the equipment that they would send, it would be an operator for that piece of equipment.
Well, I guess that would depend on.
Yeah, I think you can work that out, you know, with between the two towns, but, um. Yeah, I mean, some towns, some guys are very particular about who's running their equipment. And I get it, I'm an equipment owner myself, so, uh, that is a thing. So, but I think between the towns, we, we, everybody can work that out.
Yeah, I think the, the conversation was also, you know, we could help each other out with better rates for rentals, you know, what, what's the going rate for going outside versus, you know, what's, what we're, what we can decide between each other, you know?
Rentals for equipment, you mean?
Yeah, like instead of renting like an excavator from an outside company, going to Callas and being like, hey, your excavator is bigger, can we borrow it, or can we rent it for two weeks for a thousand dollars instead of seven thousand dollars, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the issue that I've run into with this kind of thing in the past is everybody needs their machine.
At the same time.
Same time, yeah, like everybody's mowing is due at the same time, everybody's excavating at the same time, their graders are all operating. Now, there are ways to work that in, to thread that in in between, you know, not every town's grading at the same time. More so in the spring they are, as the roads are ready at a certain time, but there are times that could be, you know, weaved into, uh, trading. So I think, I mean, this is, this is an agreement, it's not really tying us to it. It's voluntary, so if our grader's too busy and Callas needs it, well, sorry, Callas, we can't give up our grader right now. We have that option to say, no, it just doesn't work for us. So as far as, as far as signing this, I don't think it's really binding us to anything, it's just.
Nothing to sign even, is this conversation at this point?
Right, but there will be eventually.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll, they'll, they'll document it, so.
Yeah, no doubt. Alright, I'm gonna move on, we are, um, ten minutes ahead of schedule, which is great.
Fair.
Um.
Great.
Um, let's move on to the RFPs.
It couldn't have been something you said.
I'm about to say.
You, the RFP for the basement went out, right? But not the, for the windows, the windows?
The windows are the ones we're, when we're gonna discuss tonight. That I'm sure you committed to memory?
I've only got, I've only got this much pages. So there's probably more.
Well.
I've only got two pages here.
Okay, well, let me see if I can talk us through it here. Let me see if I can talk us through.
Yeah.
You ready?
I'm ready, thank you.
So, my, uh, report for tonight starts, oh, that was pretty quick.
Felt the pressure.
Wow, interesting. Rattles the windows. Anyhow, uh, again for disaster forty-eight ten DR, which was, uh, this past twenty twenty-four in July. I still haven't got any satisfaction from the contractor the state hired. And, uh, I called her, sent her several emails, and she promised to get back to me, but that's not happened yet. So I escalated it to the public assistance officer, a woman named Kim Konorecki last Friday, and hoping to hear from her. So when I talked to this woman, this woman who they hired, is from Nebraska, and so she works remotely and she didn't even recall getting my emails, so, I resent them and she said she'd get right on it, but anyhow.
This is for the thirteen thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars?
It is. It is, cause we've received the rest. But, you know, I wanna be, be sure, since this project is now closed out, that they don't forget about the thirteen thousand dollars. You know, it's, in the grand scheme of things, insignificant, but still, it's owed to us, so we, we wanna get that.
And to have it totally closed out would be nice, from your part.
Yeah, it's about ninety-nine percent closed, as soon as we get that check.
Yeah.
It'll be closed out. Okay, for the twenty twenty-three disaster four seven two zero, the town highway twenty-three and twenty-four bridges are done. And, uh, they did a great job, I think, I believe the homeowners are quite satisfied. So I began the closeout process for that disaster. I uploaded photos and invoices up to the grants portal. I updated the damage inventories, those are the, uh, documents that shows, you know, lat longs, what type of damage it was, who worked on it, that stuff. So that was at seventy-five percent, now it's at one hundred percent, they're both complete. The, uh, PDMG Public Assistance Program Delivery Manager has been alerted that both projects are done. And so now that project is on its way to be closed out as well. So again, the same project closeout forms will be sent to me, and I'll have to be sure, I don't have a number for that state's obligation, my next report will have that, that number that's owed, owed to us. We received all the FEMA funding, but I, I'll make a note here to put in the state funds here.
For forty-eight ten.
For, uh, four seven two zero.
Okay.
So I don't know what that is, I forget that amount. I think it's around sixty grand or something like that, yeah, so. Anyhow, because that, that disaster was ninety cent, ninety percent reimbursement to the town from the federal government, and I wanna say seven and a half percent from the state. So Woodbury only had to cough up two and a half percent of the total cost.
Where in twenty-three that was bigger?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, twenty-three was like a million three, we were able to convince FEMA that that was the right number. Where this other one was, I don't know, maybe a hundred thousand dollars. So any question on the, uh, two disasters before I go forward? Okay, mitigation projects. So, two contractors participated in the site survey for the roof replacements, so that's first up in the project list. Bids are due next Thursday, here, and the bid opening will be at your next select board meeting. September eighth. Contractor selected on September eighth, if you, if you guys can do that, that's fine, if you need to take some more time, that's fine too. We can adjust, you know, the Gantt chart accordingly. And it just goes on, contract would be signed September fifteenth. And work start and complete is September twenty-second, complete October seventeenth. So, and I presume that the board will allow for the work start and complete to slip a little bit if needed, if they can't get the, uh, the material for some reason, or workers. That's, that'd be something you guys can do at contract negotiations, I presume.
Have you received, uh, either of those bids yet?
Yes.
Both of them?
Just one.
Just one, which one?
Um, it is Vermont Construction.
Okay, um, I got a text and I didn't, I don't really know how this works, but it was like, uh, sort of a generic text, um, from the guy who came out to check out the roofs that was representing Snow Country. Um, and it said something about the bid being ready, but I assumed that they were gonna submit it by mail, so I didn't really do anything with it. But if we haven't received it yet, I wonder if I should.
Well, they don't have to be in until what?
The fourth.
The fourth, which is next week.
Okay, there's some time, if it gets really close, maybe, then I'll reach out.
Right now and say bids are due.
I'll text them back.
September fourth.
Okay. I don't think it was really from him though, that's the thing is.
Oh, wasn't from him.
It's his name, but I think it was like a, a robot text or something, it was something a little different.
Like an automated, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, which is why I kinda didn't want it.
So it doesn't have to be through US mail, it just has to be a sealed envelope.
Okay, I just don't wanna miss a bid because I ignored something that I shouldn't have ignored, so.
What company was it?
Um, this was from Snow Country.
Interesting, so any questions on the roof replacement? Basement waterproofing, so I had to revise that because of inconsistencies in the dates. So that was sent out last week, uh, new advertisement was sent out with the updated, uh, URL. Actually, it was the same URL, but a different document behind it. Uh, and to go on, I contacted, contacted several vendors through their webpages just to let them know that the bid is out, and if you cared to bid, fine, if not, that's okay too. So the contractor's site visit is slated for this Wednesday.
Ten AM.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This Wednesday.
I have it here.
Okay.
I did get a call from, um, Twin State. And they they're gonna come on Wednesday. They were a little uncomfortable that all the, everybody's gonna be here at the same time, especially since it's a different project, but no big deal.
Yeah, as long as they don't start a fight.
FEMA are interesting, aren't they?
I might be there, if everything goes well.
You what?
Might be here.
You might be here?
Yeah.
Who else is gonna be here?
I don't know.
Okay, I'd like to be here just because I wanna hear.
You're gonna be here Wednesday?
The idea is.
I'll be here.
I'm happy to be here if you want me to be.
That'd be great.
Okay, I'll be here.
Alfie, do you wanna be here on Wednesday?
If my knowledge would be useful.
Well, I think early on you mentioned connection to something up there.
Stormwater, there's a catch basin there, but.
But we still don't even know if they're gonna recommend that digging and ditching and everything.
There might be some good information that was not in the RFP, you know.
Right, do, we don't have an engineer working on this?
Uh-uh, no.
What kind of engineer?
One that knows dirt and.
Oh, no.
I mean, we're talking about digging down to the base of the foundation, right, and putting in drainage.
Oh.
Right.
And that's what's recommended. We've, we've, this bid that went out is basically, we're not necessarily comparing apples to apples. We're asking them to come in, make a recommendation. We evaluate the recommendations that they make and then um decide on what we think are the best uh best proposal is, best price, weigh those things.
Right. So Alfie, you make a great point. So once these bids come in, uh, I'm not, that's not my scope to evaluate basement waterproofing. Should we contact someone who, like you say, Alfie's an engineer, to look at these bids?
I actually don't think we need an engineer for this, but I also think that they're probably, these companies that we contacted, I bet you are not gonna recommend excavation. I think that'll be beyond their scope of what they do. They might, but um I think that they're gonna focus mostly on the interior. And that if we want to have like a curtain drain put in or something like that, that we could, that might be a different project.
Okay.
We can, we can pitch that to them, whether maybe you guys ever recommend
Right.
e- exterior excavation and curtain drains and see what they say.
That's why the RFP is kind of open-ended.
Yes.
What do you, what do you? I think we should do.
I could show off. Is this coming Wednesday?
Ten AM. If you can. All right.
Yeah, on second thought, we might have had like fifteen-minute interviews, appointments, you know, so they wouldn't always.
No, you can't do that.
Long day or?
No, just let them walk around, take notes, and be grumpy.
Can they come and make their?
Yeah, it'll be fine. Okay, and then the rest of the Gantt chart is what it is. Questions are due by the fifth. Bids are due to Robin on the twenty-fifth. Bid opening at the board meeting on the twenty-ninth. Uh, contract is selected on the twenty-ninth, maybe?
I don't, yeah, I can't imagine it's gonna be.
Okay, contract, yeah, contract signed on October tenth and work start and complete October thirteenth through November seventh. And so.
We can keep the schedule on if we have to amend that schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think let's keep.
Yeah, we could tell that to the folks, too, that the uh work start and complete is negotiable, you know, and uh.
So you're gonna have a special board meeting on September twenty-ninth to open the bids?
Why, is that not a select board meeting?
It is not.
It's not.
Well.
Oh, it's not, it's the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, yeah, well, we can do that.
Yeah. Okay.
So we have absolutely no idea what this cost might be.
No.
That should be interesting.
Okay, so I'll amend this, okay. Five Mondays in September, wow, okay. And the last one is the uh town clerk's office window replacement. So I sent that out a week ago, and I'm wondering if you folks had had a chance to look it over.
I did.
I don't know why I only, oh, you, you must have given us this because it's got color, so I wouldn't have printed that out. So I think I missed that some.
I thought I looked against it.
I didn't really have any comments on it. I thought it was good.
Okay, so basically, the uh boilerplate is the same. But on scope of work and material specs and attachment B, that's where the changes occurred.
I have one question. Don't let me drop you, I'm sorry.
The numbers of windows and things like that have changed?
Yeah, that's been changed. And I added a paragraph, but once the contractor removes the windows, that they should take a look at the framing around it and thoroughly inspected by the contractor to determine if any replacement work on the wood members is required. So if it's all rotted, they have to reframe it before they put their windows in, basically. So it's pretty self-explanatory. Seal and insulate the new windows in the form of water leakage test.
Hmm.
Yeah.
What, I guess, what is a water leakage test?
Well, I didn't wanna put it in what a water leakage test is.
Garden hose.
It's exactly, that's exactly what it is. Yeah, just a garden hose to make sure it doesn't leak.
That's gonna be tricky since there's no place on this building where you can hook up a water hose.
We'll ask the fire department to come down with a pumper.
Yeah, good idea.
I'm sure Mr. Sarudi will allow that down, but, yeah. And the interior, exterior trim uh around the windows, it's gonna be all new. It's gonna be primed, okay? And the windows itself, the frame of the windows would be vinyl, white with grills, yeah, okay?
With what?
Grills.
Oh, okay, you didn't decide to do that? Good.
Yeah, because those, those are.
They're gonna uh ask you, they will ask us like, how many?
Twelve over twelve or eight over eight, looks like probably.
Six over six, yeah.
You think they'll ask like, what style, like interior, like the integral or?
Unless there's a, I wonder if it, because it's a, I bet you, because it's a hurricane glass.
Yep.
I bet you it's just like the grills that pop on the outside.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But yeah, so we'll probably need to be able to answer that question.
Did you ever find a picture, Robin?
Nope.
Do they have any, we don't have any in the whole building with grills, none of the downstairs ones?
No.
No, no, okay.
And so the timeline is as it is, uh. It'll be advertised, select board approves the RFP September eighth. So I gave two more weeks to look it over and see if you can find anything wrong with it. So approve it September eighth. It'll be advertised by September eleventh. Contractor's site visit is the twenty-fifth. Questions due October second. Bids due October twenty-third. Bid opening October twenty-seventh. Contract signed October thirtieth. Work start and complete November third through November nineteenth. That's all I have. So uh at the next select board meeting, perhaps you can take another look between now and then and give the final approval, and we'll start to work on it. Or you can do it tonight, too.
When did you send the email with the uh RFP?
Last Monday.
Last Monday.
Yeah.
You want me to forward it to you?
Sure, it'd be nice.
But if you approve it tonight, I can get going on it and sooner. Up to you guys.
I'm comfortable approving it, but uh I don't know how everybody else feels.
Well, I think the only thing would be to give Diana a chance to look at it.
It's okay, no, I think the scope of work is mostly what's of interest and rest of it is.
Just saying boilerplate is the other, too. That seems to work. That seems to work.
So there is no hose bid on the, on the building?
There was one time when we were looking to wash the building and, and next door, I think they had one on, outside the uh, the far end of the building in a well with a basement window. That was what Vera, uh, Geila had offered us, but we never used it, so.
That might be a little bit tricky for them to figure out how to do a water leakage test.
Do a plumber.
Hmm?
Plumber could put a bid in or a.
Yeah, it could do it pretty, pretty fast, right? I guess that would just be something we'd have to, does, do we have a plumber that works on the building? No, I don't know. We'll just need to be done by.
Well, Robin's got somebody, I think. You have a plumber in the family?
Yep.
Yeah, but if we, yeah, whether we want an outdoor hose bid or.
Probably could get that in. We'll figure it out, okay? Without water on site, I think it just might be a difficult one.
Is there, there's not something like on the pressure tank that you can?
Maybe there's probably, yeah, they'll figure it out.
Or even if it's on like the hot water tank, like screw a hose on there and run it out of the window?
That's a good idea.
They can always bring water with them.
Yeah, they might have a way to do that.
I think that I would, I would not do that job. I always say no.
Okay, you're on water.
Yeah, right. All right, so next up is work on culverts, and I continue this. And next steps, next steps will, I'll meet with Lily and uh Alfie to talk about mitigation expenses and look at that account once we pay for the three hundred and four thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars to see what's in that account, how much Alfie has spent to date, so we can have uh you know, just a reconciliation of the account, see how much is there. And I know these projects may, I don't know, what they're gonna come in at, probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollars altogether, I'm presuming. And then other mitigation projects that Michael Gray has talked about will draw some monies from this, too.
Well, plus there's the three big culverts that we don't have any numbers on, right, that we're waiting for
Right.
Nate to give us some engineering and at least some estimates.
Yes, yes.
So three of culverts are done, right?
There's three projects done.
Three projects done.
That are all, the information's all into Lily, and that's something we could, we could do your, do this on as projects.
And maybe the other culverts are gonna be, you know, maybe close to the same amounts?
Uh, yeah, it's hard to say. There's a lot of variables there. If we sound, if we do it ourselves, or if it goes to bid, or if it, all of that, uh, there's, and we don't even know what the actual engineering is.
Right, yeah, so.
Uh, he did say possibly September was what his thoughts were. Uh, but we did get, I guess that is rain, yeah?
Oh, it's raining a lot, Ken.
We did get the hydraulic study on one of them done, and that has been shipped off to Nate. So that might help. It's less, it's a little bit less work for him to have to do, so hopefully that will help him.
So he transcame through with one of them?
Yes.
Wow.
And so, uh, and Michael's been communicating with Nate some on that, but I just don't know what their response was.
So.
Did you leave your car window down?
No.
Okay.
So might be a, a little premature, but um just important to note, um, especially since budgeting is around the corner for the next fiscal year. Yeah, I know, right? Um, depending on where we come out with these bids and what our plans are for um the road mitigation work, we may have to budget in a single audit for next year. Um, I think the threshold is seven hundred and fifty K um of federal money that is used in one fiscal year requires a single audit. Um.
Audit by whom?
By federal, by the government. Or the, when we report on it.
Does FEMA fall into that category?
Yes, when we report on that money, um, the request is essentially if you have spent over this much money from the federal government, they require a single audit to be done. Um, so I know in our discussion with Callas, Callas had to do it last year or this previous year, and I think it cost them around ten thousand dollars. Um, so that's something that we can discuss more in our meeting, um, with, and especially after we get these bids, what that's going to look like. Whether that means that, you know, we don't start a mitigation project until the new fiscal year or June, what have you.
When do we have to use this money back?
Doesn't matter.
Great, I like that.
But we've already used three hundred and something, right?
Three oh four.
Three oh four.
Out of five something?
So as long as we keep it under two hundred and fifty, we got it. Three hundred and fifty. It'll be under the seven fifty. Is that the number?
No, I think he said five thirty-five. Did you say that?
Five thirty-five is remaining.
That's what we'll have left.
But seven fifty is what flags an audit.
Correct.
For bridges?
Yep.
Correct. So seven hundred and fifty K kicks in an audit, huh?
A single audit, which I think is smaller than a, a full-blown audit. Um, so I'll gather more information on it. We'll be discussing, yeah.
Interesting. Is there something new?
Um, it looked like something new. Um, when Brandy saw it, um, she seemed to think that it was new from reporting. Um, so.
Is it likely that these, we'd get these bids out and that projects could even be done in twenty twenty-five anyway?
The culverts, the culverts that I'm working on, there's a slight chance for one of them, but that's it.
So probably not, probably this is all getting pushed to twenty twenty-second anyways.
I would say it could come out, probably.
Yeah, and depending on the one, the ones that we just talked about, depending on where those numbers go, you're not, might not have much left over for culverts, which is a bummer to me, but uh, it is what it is.
So the fund that, that might be, might get engineered this year, is that one that you would do with our current staff?
It's the one that's more crucial, yes. When I met with Nate C. Card that day, he and I both agreed that this one that he thinks he can do is the more crucial one.
And that's the one you have the H and H on?
Correct.
Oh.
Yes, so that one's sort of in the queue kind of, and it would be great if we could pull that off. But it's all about him being able to engineer it and tell me what to put in there.
I'm sorry, which project is that?
This is the culvert near Diego's.
Okay, yep.
It's washed out both floods and it washes both, both directions. It's not just one part of the road. It's like, it goes both ways and washes the road both ways, so it's.
So we'd be able to find out how close we are to the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold once the bids are in for these three projects. And we could defer Diego's culvert and any other culverts till July first, twenty twenty-six, if need be.
About why, you mean in the?
If these bids come in, ask Alfie.
Right, of these bids?
Yes.
Yeah, well, they'll be in by the end of the year. They'll be done by the end of the year.
So do you, so, but, but the culverts weren't involved, right?
But we should.
For these?
Yeah.
We will, we'll have a number in the next month.
Okay.
I mean, we're gonna honor these bids within the next month, right? I'm hearing October.
Correct.
So we'll have a number, what that is gonna be. We'll know how much more we can spend to stay under the seven thirty.
And if need be, defer some of the projects till July first, twenty twenty-six.
Why will there be more money in July first, twenty twenty-six?
Because it's a new federal, a new fiscal year.
Yeah.
It's a new fiscal year.
But that's general fund, that's not.
This is FEMA monies.
FEMA money.
Lily just said FEMA monies.
To get away from the audit.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we don't have to spend money on a single audit.
If you spend less than seven fifty, we don't need the audit in a fiscal year.
In a fiscal year.
So.
And what, when do you, can't work in, in the streams anymore, using date, October something?
Uh, it's October fifteenth unless you get. Uh, it's October fifteenth unless you get special permission.
And they can do roof work if it's snowy?
Uh, unless, unless it snows in September, we'll be fine.
They can do it, do it in winter.
They'll do, yeah.
Really?
Seems miserable to me.
They would not wanna be a roof worker.
Cold that on the weather?
And that was about like ninety degrees, I take winter, I think.
And just because we've gone out with an RFP does not mean that we have to choose a contract, if they come in like crazy. We still have a choice.
Right. Alright, um, so I know we got a few other things to discuss and skips, uh. No, maybe we don't, we're done. And we are right on time for the board commissioners' report, seven ten.
Uh, so the big hot thing, Rob, that I'd like to talk about is the truck. That we are, you know, that is approved to purchase, um, the price is quite a bit higher than what I. 我以为. anticipated, uh, for multiple reasons, I guess. So I've got a, a new fresh quote, uh, beating up quite a bit, and I've got. Some more features added to the truck in that process. And so our new number is, let me get the glasses so I can make sure it's right.
Your old number was roughly two hundred K when we were talking?
Yeah, that's, yeah. So now we are two ninety-nine, six seventeen.
Six seventeen, and you were gonna think about trade in or not trade in?
I would love to keep the truck that we have, um, for a spare. We're, and get rid of the forty-nine hundred, which is the one that's not safe to be on the road. Probably not gonna get much to retrieve from this, but. But I know that's a hit, so if we don't have a spare truck, then we'll have to live with that, I mean, it's.
Right, have they talked at all about the possible trade in price?
Uh, no, I didn't even get him to look at.
Okay.
The last one, we got thirty-three thousand for, like, the last time we purchased the truck.
Is this still the same guy in New Hampshire?
It is. Um, so what, what sort of happened, and I'm very disappointed about, is that, that when I talked to them way back in March. They said that they were gonna have trucks turnkey, ready to go, that we could come down and pick out what we wanted and purchase it. So that's what I was going on all this time, I went down there the other day and they don't have a single truck.
Oh, Jesus.
They've got a hundred trucks with just cabin chassis, but nothing that is built.
Yeah.
So, uh. So they have a truck, they can have it built, if as soon as I sign this, the, the time starts, they're guaranteeing in ninety days. They, right now they have a cabin chassis, we've signed on that, they start putting the body and the plows and all that stuff on. So this truck.
So December.
Have it made for December first?
Yeah, and maybe sooner, they said, they said they give ninety just to protect themselves, but.
And that's wing, plow, everything?
Ready to go to plow, go to work, that's right, ready to go. Uh, this truck will have a stainless steel body on it, so preventing any rust and chips and all that. Which is important, uh, he's gonna undercoat it, the whole underneath, once it's all built and all the pipes and everything's in. They undercoat it, which is a added value, I think. And I think, I think no matter what we do, I mean, we could, we could probably get a truck that. What Peter, Peter wants, it's just gonna be his truck we're replacing, he wants a standard transmission. So do I, I tried all I could do to get a transmission, a standard transmission, they're just not available. Unless you special order it, special order is a year and a half out. So I didn't think we wanted to wait a year and a half to replace this truck.
Yeah, your advice that this truck that's being replaced is not probably gonna do well through the winter, right?
I think it's gonna cost us money.
Yeah.
It's gonna, it's, it's, it's a two thousand fourteen, so it's almost eleven years old. It is eleven years old, so it's gonna start costing.
Is there significant cost savings if we waited a year and a half and got the six shift? Like, I thought you said before those were less expensive?
They are, it's like a ten thousand dollar difference.
Oh, okay, not a lot.
Between a standard transmission and an automatic transmission.
Okay.
Uh, the kicker there is the weight, it's the weight, that's what's, that's what's stinging me is the year and a half to wait.
Oh, about wait.
For a special truck, for a special order truck.
Yeah.
And what's the difference between price wise, the stainless steel body versus the type of bodies we have now?
Fifteen hundred dollars.
Really?
Blows my mind, I can't believe it, but. I, I asked him that, cause he actually, he actually gave me the option to go either stainless steel or. The, the heart, what they call hard ox body, which is steel painted.
Yep.
Um, and it's only fifteen hundred dollars, so to me, that fifteen hundred dollars is money well spent.
Yeah, really.
Stainless steel, especially we're in the saw, we're in the grind, we're all, you know, it's, uh, it's money well spent.
So you originally had, um, were interested in these guys in New Hampshire because they had said we either, we can have a truck you could take home today. I think wasn't the case, um, is it worth shopping or not, or are we pretty much looking at three hundred thousand?
If we're willing to wait, I've talked to everybody, nobody has trucks that can be put together that fast, in ninety days.
In ninety days, yeah, and then if we're willing to wait, what are we saving?
Uh, I think, again, I think you're another year away.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't think you're gonna save much because.
I mean, you're gonna save.
The, the, the cost of trucks are really high.
We're not, we're not saving fifty thousand dollars or sixty thousand, we're saving ten, twelve, something like that.
So we have that kind of money, Lily?
No, the short answer, uh, in the HERF fund specifically, um, so we have a ninety thousand dollar transfer over to the HERF fund. Scheduled for this year, um, that'll bring our fund up to around two hundred and forty K. Um, so that would leave about sixty K, not necessarily there, um.
So for two forty after you put in ninety thousand?
Yep.
When does that transfer happen?
Um, happens after we, um, get all our tax money in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um.
Ideally, I mean.
Ideally.
You explained at one point that we have to pay the, the school taxes.
Yep.
Before, when, when are those expected to be paid to the state?
Oh goodness.
Right around November first?
Yeah, I think it's, yep, it's right after our due date.
Yep.
Yep. Yep, um. I know we have our Swenson's reimbursement, sixty-five percent goes into the HERF fund, um. Goodness, I was just on this page, I think we have twenty-five thousand expected for this year, um.
When does that go in?
Throughout, uh, we get paid in quarters.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Yeah. Um, so quick, quick, quick math, what is that, eighteen thousand additional? Um, that we would add to that ninety thousand, so we're at two forty, two fifty.
Two fifty-six, two fifty-eight?
So.
Two fifty-six, two fifty-eight.
So what do we do for the rest of it, we dip into our. The one thing that you're.
Plowing the roads, I can pick cans.
Yep.
Do what? A coin drop, maybe?
Uh, well, a couple of things that I need to add, um, the last truck we bought, uh, two years ago was two hundred and twenty-six thousand. So we're only talking on an increase of seventy thousand in two years.
And is that before, cause you said we traded in a truck for thirty-three thousand or something like that, so was the actual cost of that truck? Two sixty or something like that?
I think two. Yes, I think you're right, so without the trade, or with the trade, it brought it down to two twenty-six.
Got it.
We did have a surplus in our highway this year, so we could dip into, um, a little bit of our highway fund. Um, to cover the additional money that we would need for it.
Right, we, we're gonna retrieve a little bit of money, a little bit of money from the old trailer that we're gonna sell. And also that forty-nine hundred, I wouldn't expect much, if you get ten between the two of them, we'll be doing really well, but that's something.
That's not, yeah.
Have we been, and you said, I asked you a second ago, we have been operating with a backup truck, net, right currently?
We've always had the forty-nine, it's a six wheel forty-nine hundred international, that is a backup. And for the last three years, I've made sure that it's ready to go in the event we need it, piles on. We use that for the chloride in the summer, I take the some, the chloride tank out, it's ready to put some sand on it if we had to.
Do you wanna get rid of that one?
I wanna get rid of that one.
And then use the truck that Peter's currently driving as the backup?
Correct.
And we might get how much for that if we didn't have a backup, I'm not saying that's a good idea, I'm just getting all the information.
Yeah, I would say somewhere around the same as we got for the last one.
Thirty-three and something, we might be down to two seventy or something like that.
Well, you know, in the past, two trucks back, when we did the lease purchase, we were just paying them. Monthly, so I don't know, I, we can, if we don't have all the money right now, we can borrow it, right, make payments?
What's, what's the balance of the highway fund?
I would have to grab the sheet for you.
Right, so that, that's a good point, because, and I can add to that, all, all summer, we have been doing FEMA mitigation work. So we are not tapping into our regular budget monies much. For the last three years now, as a matter of fact. Uh, last year, we were way under budget. And we're probably gonna be again this year.
And we also have that tax anticipation note, um, you know, if, 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 if we needed it, that is why it's.
If we needed it. Yep.
Yeah, one of the reasons why it's.
And then by the time, you know, January rolls around and we have, most of our taxes have been paid, then we could start paying it off or something.
When do they need to get paid for the truck, is it when you sign?
When it comes in.
When it comes in, so it would be ninety days from whenever we.
I'm hoping forty-five, but yeah.
Okay.
The highway fund had eighty-three thousand in it at the end of July.
Really?
Of balance.
Oh, we didn't take that into account when we set the property tax rate?
That would have been carryover, um, it's a no. It is best practice to have about three months worth.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
That's what you ought to have.
Yeah.
At least, yeah.
It, I know it pushes that ninety days back, um. But if we have, you're looking for an answer tonight, I know in an ideal world.
And the idea, yeah, just to get that clock ticking.
Sure.
I mean, we're looking at, who knows what's gonna happen with tariffs?
Well, that's true.
So even, even if we're, they're working with materials they already have, if they have to start paying more to replace those materials, that's gonna.
Right.
Be applied to the.
Next year at this time, you'll, you'll spend four hundred thousand.
Yeah, okay, well, I think we should just go for it and pay, pay when we can.
And there's no sense in, uh, and I'm not trying to nickel and dime this thing, if you guys think this is crazy, but no sense in trying to, um. Trade in that truck that Peter's currently driving, keeping the forty-three hundred, uh, forty-nine hundred on the road?
I, I don't feel safe with that truck, it's not inspected, it's not, I mean, the, the break.
That's all I need to hear.
That's the one we've put a motor into, the body is rotten off a bit, I, I don't feel safe even letting that go out during the summertime.
That's all I need, no.
If there was an accident, we're gonna be on the hook.
Yep.
For that truck being on the road, I, I'm just, I'm sorry, but that's a fact.
We have a three person crew, we should have three plow trucks, I think, so. I mean, I know you've got the little one that you do some plowing with.
Right.
The, what do we call it, the low pro?
Well, and the other thing to think about also is even these new trucks break down. You know, they, they, even the brand new ones break down, and then they're out to try to get serviced for two, three weeks. Mother nature's not gonna stop dropping white stuff because our trucks broke down, that's the handy part about having the spare truck.
Yep.
Because if we know a truck's gonna be down for a certain amount of time, we put the other one right in, and, and our roads are still being plowed.
And the one that you would be keeping is one that you're already familiar with and all the maintenance has been kept up and all that stuff, so you're pretty confident in what you've got there?
Yeah, and we'll dress that one up because the new truck won't be here, we'll get snow probably before the new truck comes. So we'll have the plow on and it'll be all ready to go.
Does this place that you're looking to get it from, do they offer any kind of in-house financing? I'm wondering if you could negotiate some financing terms, like a zero interest for one year, you know, something like that?
It's possible, it is possible, I didn't, I didn't check in with that.
Okay.
Zero interest?
Well, isn't that like, I feel like I've heard that offer, it's not so recently, but.
I get that on my Subaru.
I don't know, if we have like twelve months with no interest, you know, paid most of it.
I think, in the, in the past, in my experience with buying big trucks, the town can get a cheaper rate, interest rate out of bank.
Okay.
Than, than they could do a dealer.
Okay.
Let me look at this, what, this five something percent on that?
Tell them we're looking at another truck somewhere else.
Well, and so another thing I need to add, this is also a seven year warranty.
Great.
Uh, both on the motor, afterburner, transmission, everything, and so that added. Like eighty-five hundred bucks to this price. I suggest we definitely buy that warranty. Um, because if the truck comes with a one year.
Oh.
Generally, nothing ever happens in one year, so you have to pay the extra money to get the seven years.
Yep.
So it's just, that's another, you know.
Didn't you do that with the last truck, buy an extended warranty?
Yes. The truck that I am involved in buying is, needs to have a warranty on it, cause it's, it's so expensive. You put a transmission in one of these trucks, it's twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. You've now covered your warranty three times over. So I think definitely warranty is necessary.
So can I ask if, if, if this sounds like we don't pay until we pick it up in ninety days, potentially, that ninety grand would be transferred to the HERF? So we'd be at two forty?
I believe so.
Ninety days, yeah, it'd be pretty close, but we'd be, so we'd have two forty towards this three hundred. And we've got, what does it look like if we use the balance in the highway fund for, for the remainder? Is that not a possibility?
I mean, we could, we could use it, if we need to use it, we will, but it will possibly show, depending on how our, um, budget is. Or how, how our balance is over the next year, could show as a deficit in the highway, um, that we were spent more than we were supposed to. Um, if we're cutting costs by thirty, forty K for this year with our highway budget, won't necessarily see it.
I see, currently we're at it, we have a balance of eighty, but we don't know for the remainder of the year, yeah.
And you've got a cross line.
Yeah.
We're, we're starting out with a balance of eighty something thousand?
That's in the HERF fund, eighty?
No, that's, that's, that was a surplus.
No, that's, that was, um. Yeah, where we started at by twenty-six for the.
You got a hundred and fifty in the HERF now.
That's our, that would be our best option, right, would be borrowing from, or moving funds from the highway fund? Cause otherwise, we're looking at like, if we use that line of credit, then we're getting hit with interest charges, okay.
So we should do that and then use the line of credit if we need to.
Yep, I would say line of credit is last resort. Indonesian era.
I don't know that we have a whole lot of, a lot of choice, we have unsafe trucks that we can't put on the, on the road. We need to have a truck for winter.
If we want, I can run the numbers a little bit more closely, like I said, Alfie talked to me about this, this morning, and.
Yeah, it's afternoon, we're getting that.
Yeah, and I can send you guys what it'll actually look like if we decide to use the remainder of the HERF fund. When we'll get that payment in, you specific dates on, on what it'll look like, I can get that to you probably by the end of the week.
Okay.
Maybe that puts us off for another, I mean, we could have a special meeting if we really need to, but if it's another fourteen days, two weeks, happy to have a special meeting.
So, you're thinking, well, I'm sorry, did I, I missed something, are you saying that we wait until more numbers get crunched?
Well, we're not gonna ask Lily to do it right now, and she offered to, um, I'm happy to.
We could also, I mean, it does kinda sound like we're in the position where we do need, we need a new truck, a safe truck, um, so either we can wait and. Um, so either we can wait until I have the numbers for you, or we can make the decision and I can show you guys how it's gonna look.
I don't think we should, I don't think we should wait another two weeks, it's gonna be winter before you know it. And it's not gonna make any difference, whatever you come up with is not gonna make a difference.
Good point.
It's just gonna tell you guys how it's gonna look, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I agree.
I think, yeah, I think we have to buy it, too.
We've already approved buying it, right, so at some point.
We've agreed to it, it just is is more money, so we're not really voting on the excess money. So, maybe this will help, I don't know. But if if we were to look up what we actually agreed upon, the town voted on. Uh, to purchase this truck?
The town didn't vote on it.
Oh, they didn't vote on it?
No.
So, but we had to, we had to have come up with a number. Do we know exactly what that number was?
Whatever you gave us.
Do you know about when we first started talking about it?
Oh, it would have been back towards town meeting day.
Yeah.
It wasn't, it wouldn't have been one of the articles that we voted on?
No, we, no, it would all come, that's why we have the HERF fund, because.
Yeah.
We just put that money in there and then we spend it, we don't need voter approval to spend it, once it's in the fund.
Another tough thing is that, is that this, the emissions. The emissions that is, that Vermont is thinking about passing, is gonna raise the cost of these trucks. And that's, they're talking about that happening next year. So, it's it's just. It's a bummer, it really is, I mean, everything is going through the roof, I mean, have you priced a car, an automobile lately?
Oh, yeah.
Everything is ridiculous, um. So it's not, it's not just municipal trucks, it's it's everything. You know, buy a motorcycle now, go buy a bicycle right now, you can spend three thousand dollars for like not a bicycle. It's, I think it's, it's things that we have to face and. It's only gonna get worse.
Well, I guess I'll make a motion then that we just authorize Alfie to go buy that truck for two-hundred ninety-nine thousand plus or minus and.
Probably need that.
Keep the other truck and.
Two ninety-nine, six seventeen?
Two ninety-nine, six seventeen.
Are we authorizing it with the additional cost of the seven-year warranty at eight thousand five hundred?
Nope, that's included in that.
Oh, that's included?
Yes, yeah.
Nice, okay.
I just wanted to make you aware that we're also getting.
Yeah, okay.
That for that money.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
So any discussion?
And to clarify, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to pay until we received the truck.
With the truck, it's done and here, yes, right. Uh, I can give you this, or I can give you a copy of it later. Um, and. And once, once I sign this, that puts them in action, that truck gets going, they put it in the shop. And. It starts getting built, and then whenever it's done, if it's forty-five days, if it's ninety days, that's when they'll actually invoice us.
But can I?
I guess if there's no other discussion, we should take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, um. Signing.
Get it started.
Get it started, yeah. Winter's coming.
Yes, it is.
All right, anything else? In the road commissioner report?
I'm I'm going hopefully tomorrow with the permission of Lily to pick up the trailer, the new trailer. Uh, I think she got information, I gave her the night, the name of the guy, the company, and the amount. And she was gonna, she needed solid documents.
Yep.
So, did you achieve that today?
Yes, the check is in the warrant for you guys to sign.
Oh, so you can come down and pick it up tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
On this approved, yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not much more than what we talked about, it's twelve-seven, and we put in ten thousand for it. And it's a twenty-five thousand pound trailer, will be suitable for what we need.
Okay.
So.
One last thing, um, just a heads up, um. Sorry, um. So I'm taking my floater holiday, um, on the eighth of September.
Year what?
My floater holiday for the Battle of Bennington.
Oh, okay, oh.
Um, essentially, I won't be in the office in the morning, I will be here for our afternoon, um, select board meeting.
On the eighth, okay.
On the eighth, so just wanna let you guys know, won't be here in the morning, but I will be here in the afternoon, thank you.
Uh, we're pushing forward on the, on the Wilbur Road Grant.
Yep.
Project. In between hauling sand and grading. Uh, getting a fair amount of complaints about grading, so I'm gonna kind of focus on that this week, cuz we don't have rain. But, uh, we're putting in two culvers on Wilbur tomorrow. Uh, I think it's in the front porch forum, it'll be closed. Uh, so progress is happening there, so.
I saw that.
Can you figure out a way to get whatever size stone that. The transit is requesting, requiring?
Yes, yeah, I think, I think honestly, the easiest and fastest way is just to get it from McDonald's.
Yeah.
Uh, that way we don't have to bring a machine to the quarry and it's a lot of extra arranging for what we need.
Can't be that many loads.
Right, no, right. So that's going well, uh. Any questions or concerns on the roads, if you guys have heard, no?
The tree?
Tree.
On County Road by Calis Line?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I will, I'll put that first on my list tomorrow.
And what about the ones that, um?
Cabot Road?
Yeah, the White House, um.
The guy that only communicates to the media?
Dan, Daner?
Daner, yeah.
Oh, it's the White House just up above the first quarry turn.
Yeah, those are taken care of.
Okay.
We hired, I hired a contractor to take care of those.
Okay.
Cuz they were leaning right towards his house and kinda needed a bucket truck to take care of that, so that's all done.
Okay.
All I got.
Hey.
Okay.
Um, do you mind hanging around to, I don't know that you got a chance to look over the these, these, uh. Just love your input on the next thing, and when we get into Woodbury Select Board work, the advertisement for the road commission position. And, um, there's an application and a job description, application's pretty. What a big stuff, but mostly.
Yeah, no, I did look it over.
You did?
It looked good.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't think of anything that was missed or. It looks good.
Thank you.
I think you guys did a lot of work on that, and it looks good.
And Diana listed.
We had some help, too.
All right, um.
Signs? The bicy- the bicycle signs and the signs for the parking lot?
Well, the bicycle signs.
Asking about the bicycle.
Yeah, right, right.
People are gonna be not riding their bicycles again.
I honestly have a lot of signs to put up, I have the signs for the parking lot out here. I have signs, the bicycle signs, I have, yes, a lot of signs to put up.
Okay.
Just haven't had the right day or time to do it.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, it's on the list, I I haven't forgotten it.
How could you forget?
Yeah, right. Yeah.
I'm sending you an email with the locations.
Oh, I don't, no, that's part of my not forgetting. Uh, but yeah, no, I've, it's it's coming.
All right, so, looking at the, the, I mean, let's just knock this out, you guys have found the application, pretty much came up with.
Oh, we got the one.
The one you suggested I put on. Um, mailing address. Yeah, it's different, so I just put that on there.
So you put the only, you know, I just noticed that. You know, all of a sudden, it was bold when it wasn't before, but that's just a formatting thing, it doesn't really.
I can change that.
But affect anything.
If anybody else wants, this is not very exciting, but just.
That's right, when you get to here, all of a sudden, it's all bold.
Okay, I will change that.
Looks great to me, Chris.
So I'll change the bold. And then I'll send that, probably, I was, Robin, I can send it to you once I make the changes, then. People request it, and we can email it to them or.
Yes.
Whatever makes sense.
Chris, I have, if this is helpful, this, I did print a copy of your most recent edit of the job description. This is like Diana's draft, the only thing that isn't quite right in it is this. There's one paragraph that got crossed out, but it isn't supposed to be crossed out, but other than that, it's, um, pretty much done.
So the one I sent you today, late, late this afternoon, is the one with my edits.
It's the one I printed, but it does have that one.
But it's how you, but you said there's, yeah.
Well, I might be able to, I can't print it here, no, I could email it to somebody and we could just, I can make the edits.
The edits, it's the one that I sent you has, well, based on Lizzy's edits and then my few edits.
Yep.
Are in that most recent one that I sent you.
But there's just wrong thing, right?
But it has that one mistake.
No, it.
That's the one you sent, Diana printed it, so this, this here.
This pro- position.
This is the one you sent, has this crossed out section.
Work environment, work environment.
And this is job description, right?
Yeah.
Work with the select board, work with other town officials, work environment, the position requires physical work. Under various adverse condition, well, okay, but this is the one I printed out, so.
Oh, well, that's weird, I don't know, maybe I accidentally picked the wrong one.
Just make sure that that.
I guess as long as you, is, if you look at it and see that there's no crossed out section.
This is the one that came, is that right?
Uh, go farther down.
Is it, it's not under work environment?
Under work environment, yeah.
Yeah, it is, sorry, yeah, that's totally right, so sorry, maybe I printed the wrong one.
Okay.
I don't know how that happened.
Me neither.
Okay, so we've got it, uh, an application that, as long as we change some of the formatting. Um, get rid of the bold, probably do that for the end of the meeting, and then the job description, any conversation?
I'm good with it.
Okay, so we can, uh, approve that as written by Diana? And, um, and then the advertisement?
I know I have a copy of that, so.
Yeah, I do, it's right here, this is the one that I think we have read.
So we said here, applications can be found on the town website, at woodburyvt.org, or by calling the town office. At four-five-six-seven-zero-five-one. Okay, you can put that on.
Did you get to see that too, Alfie?
I believe so, I've seen the last one, it was, maybe I changed it.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty basic stuff. Highly skilled and experienced road commissioner.
Yep.
Good luck with that.
Um. So then the next steps are probably to approve both of the, all three of these items, and then we would ask. Um, I guess we ask the town clerk to put it in the media? Yep, post it, and then John, you would post the.
Application and the the, the job description.
Application.
Yeah, so the job description needs to go on our website, because I believe the app, I believe the advertisement. States that the job description is on our website, but it it isn't actually there yet.
And maybe we put the application on the website too, or just one arm, yeah, just make it easy to find.
Well, this says the application will be on the website, did we say?
Maybe we didn't.
But we should also say that the full job description is on the website.
That would help. Maybe we could just add it to the very last paragraph, um, a more comprehensive job description can be found on the town website. Or maybe you just say applications and a more comprehensive job description.
And Liz, you sent that to us earlier today, right?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. Cuz I think I could probably edit it right now. Final drafts, there we go.
And I wanted to say on the record that we owe Pam a thank you, cuz she actually wrote the job description and then. We all just kinda tweaked it a little bit.
All right, here's the advertisement.
Yeah, it looks good to me. Yeah, do we, uh, do we wanna add, yes, are you adding applications and?
Oh, it's gonna.
Yeah, 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 okay.
I guess I need to download this first. How did you wanna phrase that, a more thorough?
Applications and a more comprehensive job description, or a full job description?
A full description, a job description.
Yep. Application and. A thorough, thorough?
Uh, just a job description.
And a job description, yep.
Yeah.
And the application.
Okay, easy, can be found on the town website at Woodbury. Okay, so we'll save that.
So Robin's gonna ask where we wanna post it, where we wanna advertise it, and for how long? So.
We're usually posted.
Times Argus, World, News and Citizen, Gazette. Three weeks? What do you think?
Yeah.
Should we also do a front porch forum?
Well, we could, anybody can do that, yeah.
Anybody but me, cuz I screwed up my subscription, and I, I actually can't post things.
You got kicked off.
No, no, it's not like that.
Yeah, right.
It's not like that. I just tried to.
Really bad stuff to get kicked off.
I tried to switch from one email to another and I like messed it up, and now I can't do it.
Okay, well, we can manage.
Okay, so the Worlds, the Gazette, News and Citizens, those are weekly papers.
Yeah.
Times Argus is pretty much daily.
Oh.
So, do you wanna say, like, put it in Times Argus on Friday for the following three weeks? Do you want it in the Times Argus for five days for the next three weeks?
Good question.
This person, you have you?
Is there a one that's like bigger, is there like one that, do they do like a weekend, like bigger paper that more people would read, or?
No, there is the week, the Weekender that comes out on Saturday.
I might suggest VLCT also. We have a free service for advertising.
Job board. I think it's Argus. Baby's friend answer.
Okay, so we're gonna, please post. Post website. Uh, VCLT?
VLCT.
VLCT, thank you. V L C T.
Have you done that, Robin, or you want somebody else to do that in the forum?
I'll take a stab at it, and if I can't do it, I will ask for help.
And then, we're the, we're the Times Argus, how long do you guys wanna do it in the Times Argus?
Or do we wanna do it like once a week, or do we want it every day?
I say we do it every day if we're, if we're gonna get.
Okay.
Not everybody reads the paper, you know?
Every day.
And if they do read, it's usually Friday and Saturday, or the weekend, if they read it.
Right, yeah, that makes sense.
I say we do it every day for. Are we worried about cost, is that why? I'd say we do it every day for, are we worried about cost, is that why we're?
Yeah.
Yeah, expensive.
The last, what was the last one we put in, one of your RFPs that was seventy-four dollars.
For?
A day.
One day.
All right.
Is this, like smokes.
Have we ever done anything like indeed, or would, I mean, would a road commissioner be looking on in, indeed? Yeah.
Could be, could be anybody that's.
I'll put it on there.
It's on, it's on there.
I know there's a charge for it, I don't know what, what the charge is, but I think we might be casting a wire net that way.
Might as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so how about the, we'll come back to the Times Argus, how about, uh, what are the other newspapers?
World.
The World.
News and Ci- News and Citizens.
Um, that's a separate newspaper?
Yep.
Yeah.
And Gazette.
All right, the News and Citizen, where is that paper?
Marsville.
Marsville. All right, and then. Same, they eat all about seventy-four dollars a day, I can't believe that, seventy-four bucks a day.
Well, see, the, the World, News and Citizen Gazette, they're a weekly paper.
Okay, so let's do that for three weeks, um, the World, the News and the Gazette. Gazette.
Given the cost, would we wanna do the Times Argus, just like Friday and Saturday also for three weeks?
Sure, let's do that.
I don't know, I mean.
Word will get out.
Right, um, we could maybe share it on like the Woodbury Community Page on Facebook. And make it shareable, so people can like, share it, hopefully.
Alfie, you send out Christmas cards, you can put it in there.
This is pretty tough, to sit here and listen to this.
Uh, yeah.
I have to say.
Yeah.
One thing that I don't know about legalities here is you probably ought to have a resignation letter for me before you advertise this.
And we don't want that.
Well, you can't, you can't have two people in one position.
Well, we're not gonna hire somebody just because we're looking, if we don't, you know.
We don't need to hire anybody, I think they were. Just a question, I don't know if it's, uh.
We will.
I know in the past, it's, it's been, you can't, I mean, select board has to have a resignation letter before they can fill that position.
But we can advertise.
It's not easy.
We're not gonna hire.
Listen to this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's very challenging.
I think we've made it pretty clear, change of mind. Love Debbie's day. Times Argus, Saturday, Sunday, or Friday, Saturday? Friday, Saturday, for three weeks?
Yes, and when I send these to each one of these, I always ask them to send me a proof in what the pricing will be.
Okay.
So I can let you know that when I.
Three weeks, okay. You all should have it.
Okay.
Actually, that's the advertisement, yeah.
And how soon do you want me to start running this, as in this week?
I think when Alfie and I talked about it, we thought it would be good to like, get that out there soon, right?
As soon as they move on, yeah.
Yeah, now that we've only taken about a month to get the paper, you know, to get all the descriptions together.
Yeah.
We might as well go for it now.
I was gonna say, cause Times Argus, I can make it, so that one's in for this Friday and Saturday, but the other three won't be until next week.
That's fine.
Sorry.
You still have time.
Yeah, we're all sorry, don't wanna be doing, not sounds like anybody here wants to be doing this, at all.
But I, 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 I've made a decision and I, I can't keep stringing you guys along. Um, like I said, I want to help train, but I don't wanna fall snow. It just, last year burnt me out, and I don't wanna, I don't even wanna see snow, to be honest with you.
How's your wrist feeling?
It's, comes and goes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's the weather.
Yeah.
When it's cloudy and we got rain coming, that seems to bother the worst. So, that goes along with arthritis, as what they've said, so I think that's, that's what I gotta lay it to. But we've also found out that the truck that I drove on last year has no power steering. So.
You didn't notice?
I didn't realize, I just thought it was way, yeah. Realized, we've realized that there's no power steering, and that's, that's going to the shop and bringing it down tomorrow.
Oh, it could have power steering, but it just.
It will have, it will be fixed, yeah.
That's the little truck.
Yes, the little, little problem, yeah.
So, did you ever consider, I like the idea that.
Thank you.
Robin threw out a few weeks ago about having a rotating responsibility for calling out the. Crew on a snowy morning, did you ever talk to your guys about that?
I've tried that with Callis, um, the issue with that is everybody has a different opinion as to when we should go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Yeah.
It wouldn't work, but still, there's still only three of us.
Right.
And there's three routes, so that, even that would relieve me from plowing.
Yeah.
If we could figure out a way that I manage and find somebody else to take my seat on the truck. Um, you know, I would be open to that, but as I told Chris, let's put it out there and see, maybe you might find the, the absolute perfect applicant.
Yeah.
Uh, to take this over and. And you guys will all live happily ever after.
So will you, you won't be plowing.
Right, right, um, certainly in the event that we can't, you guys can't find somebody. Or maybe you can find somebody that can drive a truck, but doesn't have the management skill, I mean, I'm open to still working on that at some level. Uh, same as, as Chuck Bachelor did, uh, that worked for a couple of years, I don't know how well it worked or bad it worked, I don't know. But, uh, I would be open to that if, uh, if it comes to.
Thank you.
Comes to that. I mean, I, I know how to manage, I, I, I know the roads, I know, you know, and. I think if we put one person in charge, uh, of the daily stuff, then I think, I think we could make that work. But it's hard to really navigate that.
Yep. Well, one step at a time, we'll see, no, um, what happens, you'll hopefully be helped, I think we've talked about it, you'll hopefully help. Interview folks if we get to that point, if we get candidates that we feel like we should interview.
I also, you know, I, 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 I think I, for my own mental state, I need to. We have to have a date, I have to set a date at some point as to when I'm gonna be done done. Because right now, I, it's, it's, it's so much up to the air, I can't make future plans, I can't, I can't really, you know.
Yeah.
Figure out my life until I know what that date is gonna be.
Do you wanna be the one to pick up the new truck?
I am definitely gonna be the one.
That's a good date.
Does that mean you're here for ninety days plus? Or you said forty-five?
I fell right into that one. I'm gonna sign the documents, I'm gonna purchase this truck, um, it's debatable whether I'll be here for it or not.
Well, you could still be a subcontractor or something like that.
I would love that, yes, yes, um, you know, a date that I had in mind was October, first part of October. Cause that's when I started, three years ago, October third was my first day here. Um, but not sure if that gives you guys enough time.
We'll see what happens.
I'd say it might be tight.
Yeah, we, we see what happens in three weeks and then maybe we can, we might have to go out and.
Or maybe I go on to less time or something, or, or, I mean, I don't know, we can work on that as, as time comes, but. That's what I've sort of got in my mind. And the reason for that is it gives me a month to take care of stuff before winter. Stuff around my own house and my own, my own projects and, um. But I'm, I am flexible, to some degree for that.
Thank you, and thanks for all your work.
Yeah, I feel like, uh, we've done a lot of repair in the last three years of my being here, and, you know, uh.
Yeah, well, mine, maybe, except for Chuck, I can't even remember who the last road commissioner was.
I think we got lucky, we had you for the whole, three years of flooding that we had, yeah.
It was a lot, it was, it was a lot, um, not that anybody else couldn't have done it the same, but. It was a lot of stuff to organize and to plan materials.
We were lucky to get you for even three years, I guess.
Yeah, well.
I think you promised five, but.
Well, it was a goal, it was a goal, it's, uh, I know, but we can't always meet our goals.
Things fall apart, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, I'm here, I'm here to help, I'm here to, you know, work, work you guys through this as much, as many ways that I can.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it, Alfie, thank you.
Uh, if there's nothing else, I'd like to go home.
Yeah, you should, yeah.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Have a good night Alfie.
You bet.
What I was gonna say is if we don't get anybody in them good in the next month. We might advertise for a part-time or limited service snowplow driver. Maybe somebody who works for a construction company and gets laid off in the winter, but would rather work than be on unemployment. I don't know.
We'll figure it out, you know, I, I talked to Alfie and I think it was a hard decision for sure, but I think he agreed that we should at least put this. Uh, that this advertisement out there and, as he said, maybe we, we find the right person. But, uh, I think, I wish we could wait longer, but we can't, I mean, we can't wait any longer, we have to do it.
At least they'll live off longer now.
Yep. Um, so real quick, uh, the next thing on the agenda is this conversation with Rob Gildner, who lives up in, on. Blueberry.
Blueberry Hill.
Blueberry Hill, and, um, he is interested in having his property, how do I get this wrong? Reappraised or reassessed, reassessed, right?
Yeah.
Um, and his reasoning is that when he first bought it or built it, I can't quite remember. Um, it was very private, and since then, people have bought camps beyond his. Or built camps beyond his, and it's no longer as private, and so his thought is that maybe the value has decreased. I, I don't know that answer, and I, uh, I also thought that it's probably not a question for us to decide, but maybe.
Right, well, you can't decide that. I think the listers do, take requests like that and they can't. I don't think they can deal with them like one-on-one throughout the year, I think they have to wait until the next. Uh, the next reappraisal come, re-assessment time comes around in the spring.
Cause there's a period in which you can.
There, but there is one factor, well, yeah, there, there is one factor, um. That has to do with the, um, the type of neighborhood, something like that, whether or not it's.
So anyways, um, I think, um, either we should. Ask one of the listers to call in, is that a possibility?
That makes sense to me, cause whether they do it right now, or whether they have to wait, I feel like it's, it kinda balls in their court type of question.
Otherwise, I, you know, I said if it seemed like it was a select board, he wanted to come this evening, and I said, I'm not sure we would have any answers for him other than this. So, I need to either get back to him, or we need to have a lister, uh, give him a call. Um, do you mind asking Ron?
No, we can do that.
All right, that'd be great, thank you. Um, the other thing that's on here is personnel policy, um, it's kinda become clear to me, um, we had a brief discussion about it. Um, at the last select board, but it seems like we have all of these personnel issues that kinda keep coming up and. Um, Michael had initially thought that he might get to it in the winter, I, um. Was maybe interested in moving that along a little faster and see if he wanted any help. I asked Michael if he would be willing to collaborate with Lily, and he said he, he would encourage that.
Where is personnel policy on here?
I added it at the amended.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, cause that says parking.
No.
Key is the same thing.
And then I, I, you know, I think, I also touched base with Lily, who is, uh, willing to also collaborate with Michael to, uh. Um, at, at least begin work on it, it's something that the select board would approve, it's not anything that the three of us have time to.
I was looking at the, uh, personnel policy for the road crew that we just finished last year. And an awful lot of that is just gonna be the same. There's an awful lot of stuff that, and, and we went through VLCT, and we hired an attorney to go through other things, and. Went back and forth with VLCT several times, and to do that all again, two years later would be crazy, I mean, like I said, there was things in there that. Didn't seem that important, like making military leave and things like that, but. We never had in there before, but it was just, it was just boilerplate that they gave us that we put in, and I think if they start. If Michael starts with that policy, and I think John might have the final, uh, electronic copy.
I think I do, I've, I've sent it to Lily and Michael.
Oh, okay.
Right, Michael mentioned that he, he had it, and he asked if, you know, he should send it along, I said, we should probably wait until we have this conversation as a word.
Well, we have it, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I don't know what, what issues are different with the office crew, uh, as opposed to the, I mean, often. A lot of the things that apply to the road crew can just be taken out, and I don't know if there's other stuff that needs to be added in.
Well, one thing is the amount of time worked, I'm, I'm, I'm working basically the same amount of hours she is, she's getting more time off. On the books than I get, I've been here five years, she's been here six months.
Yeah.
That's not fair.
Why does she get more time off, cause she's working prorated and working more each week?
In, in your letter that you gave her, it said that the job is done in twenty-two hours, that's what she based hers on. Mine is done in twenty-two hours, I'm still on the eighteen hours.
I thought you had asked to be prorated.
I did, but it hasn't happened.
So I think, I think that.
Things like that.
Right, so that's why we need to.
This is why we need to do it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's just a, I did, I mean, I wrote up a piece of how that should happen already, so I don't think I brought it with me, but.
I think that, the, the email that we got, that was stating that the, um. What the personnel policy said when the prorated rate came up for Robin's position, is kinda like that. That blocker, right, and it's not, I mean, in my opinion, I think we should have this discussion. About what our hours have adjusted to be, um, jobs have changed, um, you know, and I know Robin's been working. Pretty much twenty-two hours for quite a few years.
And I, I don't know why that's even in the policy, you know?
Yeah, so it's just, yeah.
That's why we're gonna have a review of it, right, so that we clear up these things, like, I feel like almost every meeting that we have, there is an issue that goes back to the. Personnel policy.
It's not clear.
So it, it, it seems to me that it's, it's not clear, it needs to be, yes, John.
You know, the health insurance reimbursement.
Right.
Yeah.
Classic, classic case.
We gotta find a.
The other thing that, um, at least personnel policies that I'm familiar with, a real clear change log, we changed this on this date from this to this. So that you have breadcrumbs that say, that's what we did last year, but this is what we're doing this year, cause without that. You're putting out brush fighters all the time.
We have, yeah, and our old personnel policy before the road crew one did have that. Had a list of like sixteen or seventeen amendments that have been done over the years, and we totally lost, lost it.
So, I mean, I, I, we don't, I think that if the board is in agreement, um, that. We can kinda move this along, I think that that's a good strategy to move it along.
Yeah, agreed, definitely.
So what do you mean, so we've already told them to, to work on it, right, we hired Michael to do it.
And we've asked Lily to fly.
Yeah, so what do we have?
Yeah, way back in May.
Yeah.
That's it, that's what we're agreeing to.
All right, we're great.
We agree, wonderful.
Wait, I just found my thing, I just found what I was looking for. Just, yeah, so these are the changes I suggested to the sick time and the vacation time and the personnel time. So when you're ready to, you know, instead of.
Oh, this is new, like, we haven't seen that before?
Hmm?
That, what you've written up?
This was what, what I, right.
Okay.
From the old policy and suggested amendments, but then I was told at the last meeting that we're gonna give Pam whatever she you know, asked for anyway, so I stopped pushing this, but you can make a copy of that if you want, it has a current section as well as some suggestions.
So will Pam and I have some input put into this personnel policy also?
I think that there'll be a draft that would come to the board, that everybody would see and then everybody could make a draft.
Yeah, and if you have any issues that are totally not in there that you think should be in there, yeah.
But I think it makes sense to have a draft first, so we'll have the draft, the board can then see and.
Well, Lily did one back in May, what happened to that one? She worked up.
I don't think that there was a full draft and I think between Michael and Lily working together.
Yeah.
That full draft can come back to the board, so it's not complete yet.
Really? I didn't realize that was even started.
Um. So, the other thing that I received as the town health officer is, uh, communication regarding mosquito-borne virus.
Did you see the one today?
I didn't see another one today.
Because they're in Montpelier now.
Well, I mean, there was, uh, so there's three different ones and one was in, uh, the Jamestown Canyon virus, it was in Marshfield, that was the closest one we had. Uh, it's, there's nothing you can do about it.
Great.
You get it, and, um, it, like, some reactions can be severe, uh, but mostly it's, you know, that people have fevers, headaches. Um, West Nile, I, I'm not sure which one, I didn't see here.
I can't remember which one it was either.
But the report outlined West Nile virus, Jamestown Canyon virus and, um,
Is it that other new one that I heard about?
Uh, I can't remember, but I guess one of my questions is, as town health officer, I have this, it's not in Woodbury, but it is in neighboring towns. Um, do I just make that report public?
From press forum?
Um, some press forum, or like, what do I?
Is that something that somebody cares about or?
Seems like it would be good.
I mean, they sent it to me, so I don't, I don't really know.
Why don't they, why don't they just make it public from the health department?
Right.
It might have already done that somewhere, who knows, who reads those things in the paper?
Right.
When we get something like, there it is, when we get something like that, should it be printed out and hung on the bulletin boards?
Well, I, I think that the, I'm not sure what you saw, Robin, but it's a little bit more of like a interactive, maybe not interactive, but it's like a multiple page, uh, web, you know, it's a website.
Yep.
And so with maps and graphs and, um, some other information, so.
We could put a, a briefing on the town website or the link to it.
That'd be great, yeah.
So if you could, want to board that, you know, could do that.
I'll do it, thank you, John, cause the solution I was looking for. All right, the virus, mosquito-borne.
This one was West Nile.
West Nile, right, it's West Nile, it's.
That was detected in Vrejens, Montpelier, Essex Junction, Albert, St. Albans, Bennington and Brighton.
Wow.
Which is Island Pond.
The third one was Tripoli, and there was, there were no cases. There might have been one case in, uh, Swan or something like that, but.
Hmm.
All right, um, I don't know that.
I think she wanted, I think she wanted you to see them.
All right. Thank you.
And then that is the awareness preventive tool book, toolkit.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Lot of pages.
Liz, were you able to, now, we don't have to do this now, but were you able to figure out, oh, Microsoft Outlook on your phone?
I haven't tried yet still, sorry, I, but I have been really seeing way better, I left my laptop at the kitchen table and it lives there now, so now I checked my email on that.
Ah, I know somebody who knows something.
Are all of you getting the new emails from the new email addresses?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm using it mostly.
I just haven't been able to figure out how to do it.
So should we stop sending to the old address?
You can stop, no, I, I will tell you, I may not check it like every single day, but I'll check it like every most days, yeah.
I'm, I'm still sending it over.
We'll wait, I'll look to.
If it's really important.
I can't figure out, I can't figure out how to do an attachment.
Oh, I figured it out, I can show you.
I can show you right now.
Yeah.
This is, we're very select.
Took me forever to figure this out.
Sure. All right, I had that Gretchen help me if I'm honest. So, we have to make a new email, right? And then if you go up here, there's insert.
Insert.
If you hit insert, and then go here to attach a file, it'll allow you to browse this computer.
Mm-hmm.
Which is usually where your, where your, um, attachments are.
Yeah.
So, but you have to have it, have it started to compose an email.
Oh, okay, all right, and then those things pop up?
Yep, so if I get rid of this, let's say I discard this, right?
Yeah.
Discard that message, see how it's gone, there's no more insert up here.
Oh, interesting, so what if you opened one of those other messages that came to you?
All right.
And you wanna reply and, and, um.
It's all right here, so let's reply off.
But then the, the attachment.
So if we were gonna reply, right?
Yeah.
Then it should be insert right there.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yep.
We'll try again someday. Make sure I have something to attach.
So we might, unless there's any other, um, oh, actually, what I do wanna do is make sure we talk about future agenda items.
Hmm.
And we're gonna have to, uh, sign bills and payroll, but any future agenda items, actually, it'll go to Diana, but, um, for the next board meeting.
It'll be September eighth, so it's only two weeks, we don't have three week break this time, oh, well.
I mean, I know that Skip's gonna approve the RFP for the placement.
Yep.
Work.
Yep, and the windows.
The windows, the RFP is already gone.
Yeah, you're right.
Isn't that when you open your bids too? Isn't the eighth?
Good question, oh.
Where is his little sheet?
Like, his, his can chart?
Yeah.
I think you're right, Robin.
Yep, you opened bids on the eighth too.
Yeah.
We opened bids, we approved the window RFP. We can do an update on, um, the, Lily, can you remind me of the, the title that, uh, we're asking Michael Gray for the?
Requesting and aiding officer.
Yeah, thank you.
And then we will need a backup for him, essentially.
And we were thinking maybe John Gordon backup?
Or Alfie as backup or said road commissioner.
Right.
In the future.
Yep.
Okay.
Aiding officer for the Central Vermont Planning Commission.
Mutual aid.
Mutual aid.
Yep.
Yep.
Should we, did we approve the RFP for the windows tonight?
No. He's hoping to have that approved at the next meeting. Well, if there's no other, um.
I probably shouldn't ask this question, but the new truck, should you hold off ordering that until you get your new road commissioner? Or is that truck designed with what Peter wants in there and not what Alfie wants in there?
Well, Peter's the one that wants a automatic, I mean, he wants a standard, so he's not gonna get what he wants, but the rest of it should be pretty standard stuff that anybody can learn.
Yep.
I learned how to drive a automatic. After fifty years of not.
My sister's is weird.
Yeah.
The little shifting lever is up on the column.
Ooh.
You pull it forward and down for drive.
Hmm.
You pull it forward and up for reverse and just hit the end of it for park.
Oh my god, that would drive me insane.
Yeah, really.
Cause I like it pretty new.
Yep.
Ugh, I hate new, honestly, I hate the fobs, I hate all of it.
Strange, but I think, yeah, I think he's right, if we wait another year, it's gonna be much more expensive.
Right.
I'm assuming that it's just got, you know, I, it didn't sound like he was tailoring it to anybody's personal specifications.
No, he knows what's needed, he's bought more than one truck in his life, I think, for towns.
I gotta call Robin? No, you're gonna have, um.
And then just a heads up for agenda items, um, I know we're kinda switching to a new schedule, um, but that first week, um, meet, or that first meeting in the month is going to be the review of the, the financial review of the previous month.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
And we won't need quite an extensive review for the, in the next meeting, right? Am I sure?
No, not so much, yeah, it should be pretty standard.
But you said the first. Yeah, so the first meeting of the month is when you're gonna do the.
Review of all the financials of the, the previous month, so we'll go over August, where we're standing, what's going on there and, yeah.
Yeah, the whole report. Okay.
Yeah.
We're on track.
Is there anything else anybody wants to discuss?
I'll be out of the office this Thursday.
Okay. If there's nothing else, because adjourned, um, you can make, someone can make a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion.
John, did you have anything?
No.
No?
Not for Peter.
It's good entertainment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Right, right, any discussion? Hearing none, all is a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.